Okay, we're here, New Year, same folks. Our first matter tonight, this is our January 2nd meeting, is a continued public hearing on Panetti. This is to Main Street, Kisco Park. This is an application for a site development plan approval, application for a preliminary subdivision approval, stormwater management and erosion and sedimentation control for construction of a new single-family residence. You last heard this on November 21st. Is it brand new? I thought it was a contingent. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought it was continued. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
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 Hi, Dick. Okay, I apologize. I thought it was already open. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. It's Ralph Alfonzetti in the room of the project. Happy to be here, by the way.
Yep, thank you.
Uh, you guys want me to share my screen and then?
Please.
Quick overview?
Yep, please, thank you.
Yeah, I can see that.
Yep, got it.
So we have this existing lot that's just under two acres. Um, these existing residents and garage on the property. Um, there's a wetland located in the rear. Um, there's a visiting septic system located in this area. And we are proposing to subdivide into one legitimate building lot. Um, closed residence will be this location. Our proposed septic is in this location here where my cursor is. Um, even adjusted, so the wetlands, legs, after your governmental, um, quarter. And if it comes out the wetland, and you can see this area here, and this is the buffer. We stayed at a lot of them that we could. Um, I believe it was a time or two that this wall's a little bit close, so we'll look into moving that wall and we'll have to look over. So we're further away from the buffer. Um, uh, it's served by municipal water. Um, that's a quick overview and I'll give you answers to any questions.
Okay, very good. Uh, let's take the comments in. Sabrina, do you have any comments that we need to raise at this point?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have no further comments. The applicant has addressed all the planning, the performance table, the coverage issues, um, and, you know, that I have commented in my memo. So it is really, from a planning standpoint, good to go for preliminary subdivision.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Sabrina. Uh, Bob, you have some comments?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'll go over them as quickly as I can. Um, I throw about the stormwater comments, general comments, subdivision comments. Um, my concerns, biggest concerns are I still do not know whether it means a complete separation based on the D's and H's. Um, between the bottom of the drywall, that's ST1. Um, that's ST2. I highly recommend having use of the slowest rate ground, not the quickest rate. So you gotta stick it to the six inches per hour within the original design. That's ST2. ST3 through seven technical lines regarding sizing, routing, um, and volumes, which I gave, uh, supporting information to Ralph on. He's had to provide some information. Let me clarify those. Also to the limits of the infiltration areas. Have that be shown to be the fifty-foot separation between the county and SS8. Not just the drywalls themselves. I'm just concerned about this whole thing fitting within the confines of separation distance between the septic and between the house and that going to the buffer. So, uh, any haggardness of that. Um, those are my stormwater comments. I go over the general comments. You gotta adjust side lines based on the down radiance coming on down that in, um, north to south on Main Street. It brings it up like one sixty-four, although one goes up. We do this accordingly. That's TDC1. Uh, of course, you're gonna have several retaining walls here. They're about seventy-five foot length. As Ralph mentioned, before, they're seen to be unrealistic to be right on the wetlands. Bob, I've been moving it in these five separate spaces. Construction and footing. That's TCC2 and 3. Uh, GC5 basically announced. GC6 and 7, the technical lines to, uh, treat the driveway profile and right-of-way. Um, the driveway centralized and increased a bit based on chapter 113, 105, 30, so you move that north. And away from the wetlands buffer, that's TGC8. Uh, GC9, you don't need to worry, it's not too much. Waiting for the residents, GC10, it's true, don't be worried. GC11 is the, that's my little horn in the back. Uh, probably come inside, wait until one hundred three, the system. And then I got the subdivision comments, which basically, um, map the wetlands flag. And I think should be updated and the dates that should be flagged, should be changed, SSF1. And they should also put it on the zoning form and save table, which was on the one I reviewed. And also to the water service should be shown with a lot to the south. And then two lots should be called lots anyway, so it doesn't get confused with the SBLs. And also to any confirmation with Joshua Herman, whether these new tax lots were provided by him. Um, I don't know if they were, I can't tell. And, um, those are pretty much my comments for now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Now, I think we spoke before that a lot of these you would be comfortable with conditioning, but there are a couple in here that you and Dennis, I know, we'll come to Dennis. We have a couple of comments that we really think we need to, uh, get under control and fully understand before we move it forward. So Dennis, I'll take your comments as well now.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, so as far as the wetland elimination, um, as submitted by Mr. Alfonzetti, that, uh, plan sheet does accurately predict the wetlands. But I think the survey that was prepared by Stephen Johnson would need to be updated to reflect these additional flags also just to match. So that was just my comment with respect to sort of how the wetlands are, you know, now represent that line. I don't know, you're gonna try to avoid as best as possible going forward. Um, if any development, uh, this is something I didn't get an opportunity to speak to you earlier on today. I was gonna call, but, you know, there, I mean, I'm not speaking for the planning board, but there, uh, you know, have been instances when applications have been forwarded to the review board. And, uh, there has been, you know, acceptable, uh, subsurface stormwater installations, uh, within reason, within the wetlands buffer, because obviously certain properties are constrained. Certainly not getting wetlands going on in stormwater. So I just wanted to bring that up for the, you know, back of your mind. If, you know, moving forward, certainly if you need to meet county department of health requirements with the septic, um, if that needs to be an alternative considered, uh, it's something that, you know, I would, at least at a minimum, if you want to present it for discussion, as opposed to, you know, not present it, um, that's something I think that would be a consideration. I'm not gonna say it's approved and that at this time. So I just wanted to make that and the wetlands on that note. Um, as far as the tree removals, so I, when I went to just go investigate the site, I mean, some of those X's and those trees relative to where they're located, you know, compared to some of the features that already exist on the site, like the barn, I have an idea is that I think the tree that you're talking about. But in the totality, um, since they weren't marked, I didn't wanna do anything more, like sort of like a hunting pack. So if there's a way you could at least demarcate the trees in the field, um, if you can match them up to the numbers of the table that you created, that's fine. If you need to create a new table, because it's easier just to start from scratch, that's also fine, because, you know, I'm not sure, uh, some of the species listed may or may not be. Um, so if we do it by numbers, I at least know that, you know, it's a matter of reference. And as I've done for others, I'm happy to assist in terms of, you know, speciating, uh, you know, doing the measurements and, you know, assessing condition as to what, you know, replacement requirements would be. And that just leads into my final comment that, you know, obviously, considering this level of removal, um, you're gonna have to comply with 120, 160 and come up with a replacement plan, which obviously would include replanting and/or contribution to the tree bank fund. That basically are my comments. This is.
And Dennis, um, I have another comment on the trees. And that, we talked about that earlier today. The schedule that was put together by the applicant does not provide us with a condition report of the trees. So once you know which trees they are, we also need to know the condition, because there are a couple in here that are pretty substantial trees. And I'm not quite sure why they have to be, uh, cut down. I mean, I think there was a 24-inch oak in here. You know, again, if these are in very poor condition or if they're dead, that's a whole different situation. But if they're in good condition or robust condition, uh, we need to really look at this. And one of the things that we always look at is the condition of the trees and assessing whether or not, you know, uh, the permit will be granted in the way it was requested by the applicant.
Absolutely, yes.
Fewer trees removed, the better.
Pardon, Nick?
Fewer trees that are removed, the better usually. And another thing is, a lot of these trees that, uh, in the, right by the, uh, let's see, the left side. Right next to stone walls. And the stone walls are not recent, I'm sure. They were probably converted, renovated. So I don't know that all the rocks have to be removed. Um, you know, so I'm confused. If you remove the rocks, you may damage the trees. Uh, type of thing, so.
And vice versa.
It might not, if they anywhere environmentally okay, um, you know, with the way we do things. And you might save, you might save some dollars. And you would maybe not have to go and get some extra trees. Get the ones that are up against the rocks and the walls and everything are not in the way. Now, where do you wanna put the, uh, the systems for the sewage? Maybe there has to come out, whether it's heavy rocks or, or trees.
No, we certainly understand where, you know, the house is going. Trees have to be removed. Drywall's going, okay, we get it in the SSDS. But, um, it seems to me that there are a couple in the front that are maybe the result of preferred grading, perhaps. I don't, I'm not quite sure what. So again, condition report and then, uh, getting a better understanding with Dennis's visit to the field as well, uh, what's going on here, what's being proposed. Um, any comments, questions from board members?
No.
For me, just, um, you know, subject to the technical comments from Bob and Dennis, um, I'm good with this.
Yep.
Which is definitely, it's fine.
Yeah, I, you know, um, this will have to go through a final, um, subdivision application as well. So, uh, what we're looking at right now is preliminary. Um, I would, I would say, Ralph, that once we have these things set, uh, we should be able to move forward very quickly with preliminary. And then the final should be really administrative at that point, uh, just.
Okay, yeah, I, I think I'll, um, address, um, the Bob comments and maybe kind of we need to go over with it. And then I'll do the same with Dennis, um, and we'll move on.
I think that would make great sense. So I think we had looked at this with an eye toward continuing the public hearing. What date was it, Felicia?
Um, did we say the next one for the 16th or February 6th?
I think it was February 6th one, I thought. Wasn't it Sabrina? Do you recall? I don't know what the cutoff is.
I'm sorry, I'm having issues with my body buttons. For pizza, we.
Uh, the, we had, uh, looked at this for a continued public hearing in the, was it the first or second meeting in February?
It was, it was the second meeting in February.
Okay, I thought so, okay. And again, what we could do also is, uh, anticipating that we have this information, have staff draw a resolution, so we're in pretty good shape and hopefully close the public hearing and move it forward at that point, if that sounds agreeable. And again, I think we should make great headway if you have those meetings with Bob and Dennis.
Yeah, we'll do it.
Good.
Okay, so that second meeting is February 20th with, uh, submission deadline of January 29th.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, terrific. Any other questions, comments?
No. Motion.
So we have a motion then to reschedule or continue the public hearing for February 20th?
Motioned.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, Ralph. Okay. Our next matter is the public hearing for Piccolino, 15 Little Pine Road. Application for a site development plan approval for relocation of the clearing and grading limit line to construct an in-ground swimming pool. Do we have a motion to open this public hearing?
Motioned.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
You're up again.
Hello, man, and I'd like to share my screen.
Yep.
So as he said, it would be, um, hopefully, we will be moving to previously approved clearing limit line. For some reason, it was sort of right through the, um, existing, I'm gonna call it a terrace, it's just a lawn area, but, you know, clearly it's been served with this retaining wall. And photos of it now along, um, and the act and then to the light compared to the swimming pool in the, as shown on the design unit. And we will likely relocate the clearing limit line to around the, um, around the swimming wall.
Okay. Uh, I think we have comments only really from Bob on this?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Uh, basically my comments, uh, they are removing the terrace, which was originally triggering the number over 1,000 square foot mark. So they're gonna remove approximately 2,350. And now they're around 942 square feet with the pool and the equipment there. So therefore, swim is not required based on chapter 108. Uh, general comments, they're gonna increase clearing and grading by 4,600 square feet. If the planning board was inclined to approve it, um, I would recommend that they get a declaration of an amended clearing and grading limit line and a map as well to be filed with, uh, be reviewed by the town council and then be filed with the vicious ground boroughs. And I just have comments on what to call the lines, which I'd be very consistent on the previously approved clearing and grading limits and amended clearing and grading limits, so that they're really easily ascertained and found out what they are in the future, many years to come. And I do have general notes on the plan that should be there too. Uh, also to, I would recommend that the improvements be located by a surveyor prior to the COE issued and new coverage calculations be submitted as well. So we have good numbers on what was built with the plans. So when new people come in, we know exactly where they stand with development coverage and the building coverage. And I have no objection to all of these being placed in the planning where that's conditions approved as well. And those are my comments for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good, Bob. Bob, would you, um, again, consistent with what we've done in other applications, would we want to have clearing and grading markers placed in the field on this application?
Uh, I wouldn't, generally we don't do that. I mean, what we would do if any construction came in in the future, we would generally have the clearing and grading limit line staked out for urgent choke urges. Uh, but other than that, that would be it.
Okay.
Yeah, just to add, I mean, it kind of already is. If you go look at that wall being on that site, if you're standing, I wouldn't jump off that wall then to the bottom there.
I was going to say clearing and grading and jumping walls.
It's an orthopedic nightmare, exactly. So I, I think it's already been marked and, right, as I said, from prior investigation, that wall looked like it was in a 1947 area, which is the earliest records we have, so.
Terrific.
It serves as a perfect, like, that's, okay, good.
Sounds good, then.
That's a new standard, by the way. Dennis is willing to jump off of it or not.
There we go. Which reduces the square.
Okay, very good. Comments, questions from board members?
Three, four feet now.
No, um, we should advance this, this looks good.
I agree. Sabrina, there no, uh, zoning issues or planning issues? I don't think they're happening.
Hello, there are none. Uh, the applicant has just provided all the information necessary and they're completely zoning compliant.
Super, okay, thank you. Okay, um, we can close the public hearing if we wish. We can entertain that motion. Then we can also, um, instruct staff to put together a resolution for next time around. Sound reasonable?
Let's.
Let's.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, uh, motion to direct staff to drop a resolution for this application for our next meeting, which is January 16th?
Yes.
Is that enough time?
Yes.
Okay, super. Is there such motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second. We didn't just, uh?
No, this is for the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, okay. All right, so we move now to our next item. This is a request for an extension of approval. This is at 767 King Street, LLC Chiselhurst Subdivision Lot Number 6. Uh, request for an extension of approval, site development plan, 767 King Street, New York Route 120. So I believe, the applicant's attorneys here?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, and I'm for, can you give it all right?
Yes.
Uh, so the record on you, people very long to walk with McCullough and his staff. Uh, and as you stated, we are here for an extension of the seep goal permit, wetland permit, intruder removal permit for the single-family house approved for 767 King Street. As I noted in my letter, the property has changed hands as of late 2022. Uh, the new owner is reviewing the approved drawings and they're in discussions with the neuro team on whether or not they want to modify the approval. Uh, so we're asking for an extension of the, uh, slopes, wetlands, and intruder removal.
Okay, very good. John, did you have some thoughts on this that you wanted to, or just bring the board up to, uh, up to speed on? Uh, we have two board members who weren't here when this approval was, uh, approved. This application was approved. Dick was here and, anyway.
Council and I spoke briefly this morning and I just, we were talking about the delicate nature of the prior approvals and that, that is what's being extended. And to the extent that the, uh, owners, the new owners' application is, differs from those approvals, we'd be very, we're, we're indicated that it is to be very careful, um, in upsetting sort of the delicate balance that was reached by this board in a difficult site.
Right, right.
So he, he, the owner understands that, his applicant understands that, and they're gonna proceed with that knowledge.
Okay, sounds good. Um, the background on it was, it was a unique site, a very difficult site, beautiful site. And the building that was initially designed was, uh, really designed specifically for the site. Had rain gardens for the roof, et cetera. And those are the kinds of things that enable us to, to work with the site and to approve it. So, uh, the concern would be, not that there's any concern, we don't have a plan. The concern would be that if there are any kind of material changes in some of these design elements, even design elements of the structure itself, it could really, um, uh, cause issues for us. So.
But approval of the extension makes no, uh?
No reference.
No guarantees to any further approval if were there to be proposed changes, correct?
Correct, correct, correct. Yep, so is there a motion to, uh, grant the, uh, extension requested by the applicant?
What's the, what's the time that's being requested?
A year.
Do you recall the question?
One year.
One year.
One year.
Motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Happy to hear.
Yep, thank you, thank you. So we come now to the minutes, minutes of December 19, 2023. Um, does anyone have any? Uh, we did get the one change that came in today of the discussion on the Graves' application, because we had, I think, agreed that we would see markers in the field for the clearing and grading limit lines that were being changed with the buffer that was being eliminated. So with that one change, I think we're pretty much set. Does anyone have any substantive issues or questions, changes?
Nope.
If not, is there a motion to adopt the amended minutes that we received this evening?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great. And the last item, um, that we had was, I sent a memo out to, uh, planning board members and to, uh, town board members and staff. And I delighted in the fact that I dated at 12:31:23, which is 123123. No, it's, things are really desperate in my house when this is a source of entertainment. But in any event, um, there were a couple items on there and, um, that I thought was, were appropriate for us to really focus on, not by ourselves, but with staff, uh, with the town board. Uh, I did receive, we, we did receive, I think, responses from the supervisor and deputy supervisor that were favorable in each of these topics, I think. And, uh, so I think there was, um, this willingness to set up joint meetings and get us going on these things. Um, and, um, you know, I, I don't know which, what is more critical than, than the other, but it's something I think that we can tackle at the same time. I don't think any of these things are stupendously complicated. So I don't know if anyone has any comments or questions. Uh, my hope is that we could work, you know, very closely with the town board, very closely with staff. Uh, and, um, you know, it's not, this is not the planning board's thing. It's just something that the, that the town should be doing, I think, in a coordinated fashion.
So my, uh, a few comments.
Sure.
One, thank you.
Oh, well, thank you.
I appreciate, uh, you raising, uh, those issues. Certain issues, uh, either that we directly discussed previously or tangentially discussed previously and, um, worthy of, of discussion of both, uh, the planning board and the town board. And I think there's, uh, uh, wood to chop, uh, on those issues.
Yeah.
And I'm eager to have those conversations. But I, I don't know to what extent we need to get into the details of them tonight. Um, but I just, my, the only concern that I had, um, uh, was with the, the third topic, if I remember correctly, which is the enforcement question. And I think that's complicated.
Yes.
Uh, I, I, I understand the goal and I agree with the goal about when properties change hands and burdening future owners and neighbors with, uh, you know, compliance and non-compliance issues. However, I worry about oversolving a problem and burdening others and burdening, uh, a, an industry, um, an industry that, that relies on, uh, a lot of, you know, immigrant, uh, labor and, and, um, I would wanna be careful about, you know, issues associated with, with that. And so that one, to me, requires even, well, they all require, you know, delicate solutions, but that one especially.
Mm-hmm.
And so I would wanna be careful about that especially. Yeah, that was my only thought about, uh, you know, concern about kind of, moving forward on those issues. The others, for sure, need to be addressed. I did see the response from, uh, the, the Newtown supervisor and the deputy supervisor. And I, uh, it was happy to see, uh, not surprised, but happy to see a willingness and eagerness to tackle those issues.
Good, good. And I don't even know, John, if what I was proposing is really something even that the town can do in terms of licensing of those kinds of contractors. My concept would be a very modest bond, you know, a thousand-dollar bond, which would cost nothing.
Yeah, I mean, there, you know, there's, there's two things. One is, you know, Westchester County is very good about licensing home improvement contractors. Um, there's all sorts of rules and regulations involving that, whether people go outside of that, you know, at their own risk. There's, um, there's also a, a number of municipalities now require an inspection to be done before a C of O can be transferred to a new owner. So that puts the onus on the, the existing owner to legalize any condition, so that you can't be an innocent, you know, some guy who buys a house, you know, three down. It's like, I didn't change the grading in the yard. It was, you know, what, what do I know from, you know, I can't put something there. So, you know, there, um, but you can, you can have registrations of, you know, You can't be too burdensome, it can't be too local, but it, it, for safety and for licensure, it can be done.
Okay, interesting. I wasn't sure of it and I've just been so frustrated seeing some of these applicants before us. And we've had, you know, a bunch of them this past summer where, you know. And prior owners who should have, did know better, but still went ahead and made the changes. And these poor people are, you know, buy a house and all of a sudden they wanna make a little tiny change, they make an application, they find out that. They got tens of thousands of dollars of compliance and delays and professional fees. And it, you know, it's, I think a lot of it is, you know, these laws were, regulations were passed maybe fifteen, twenty years ago. There was a lot of to do, a lot of discussion. I think it's an education thing where it's just fallen by the wayside, people are unaware of it. Sabrina raised a very good point earlier today when we had a discussion, that is, you know, we've seen a rash of people coming up from the city, you know, leaving the city, buying these things. Homes on a cash basis, perhaps not doing their due diligence the way that they might otherwise have been doing their due diligence. And unfortunately falling into some of these situations. But it just doesn't seem right and, and the other issue is the, you know, I think it's a big issue frankly, throughout town is the. The Sunday morning contractors who come in, they know that there's no enforcement mechanisms out there. And all of a sudden you hear the chainsaws out there and the bulldozers and, you know, suddenly something has happened. And if the laws are worth our while and worth our review as we go through new applications and the same for the E R B and zoning board. Same people are faced with the same sort of situation. If they're worth, if they're worth having, then they're worth enforcing and, you know, not draconingly. And I'm not suggesting we hire, you know, the police to go around and do this, but if we can figure out some way that it's somewhat self-enforcing. You know, where the homeowner's aware, you just can't hire. You know, someone to do your regrading your property on a Sunday afternoon. You know, you have a problem. You know, I have this particular problem, but I think some of the people with DPW have another problem also with the guys who do the snow plowing and leave the snow in the street. Always, I mean, you know, it's just drives me up the wall, but that's my own, my own quirk. I'll go back to my one two three, one two three. And try to calm myself. Anyway, I don't think there's any need really to get into any of this, it's just laying it out there is hopefully for some future discussion with the town board and staff. And hopefully we can, you know, bite into some of these things.
I have two comments.
Yes, sure, Dick.
First, I'm happy to see that it's gonna be some sort of a parking evaluation for. Three hundred and nine, I think that that should help other things happen. It had been confirmed that the property just north of fifty, North Greeley. Is contaminated with several toxic chemicals. In the groundwater and probably in the soil color some places. And I think that it's, it's gonna, they're gonna, someone's gonna have to not just ignore this, but do an evaluation. And I think the evaluation should be, I think, in New York State EPA unit, whatever its initials are these days. And have them take a look at it and, and, you know, given what we're trying to do, I think they should have a hand in it. To make sure that the contamination is under control or not.
Dick, confirmed, confirmed by who? Where did that, is that new information?
Um, well, there's, the Ferguson, she got someone to. Uh, do the evaluation of the property and X, find the data and everything else. And it, there's have this several benzines and fluorinated compounds in the groundwater.
So it's, it's quite a bit north of fifty North Greeley, I think it's up slope and, and north, I don't know how many blocks or how many, I don't know how many lots. Uh, but apparently, you know, there's, there's some history.
Right, but who, sorry, but who, who was Ferguson? Who, who did that testing and?
They were outside, outside folks.
But I'm happy.
It's fifty, yeah, you know, where North Greeley. It was for, I believe it's the property just to the north.
So they, they did a, some, some testing of the groundwater on their own site?
Ah, yeah.
In service of what? I mean, why, why did they do that?
Well, I think that, wasn't there Dick, wasn't there some public record of some contamination of some sort on this lot? Which is a little bit attenuated from fifty North Greeley. I don't, I don't think we should focus on that. It's, it's somewhere up in the north. And then, of course, the other issue was across the tracks, there was obviously considerable contamination for the conifer project.
I'm just curious, are we, are we anticipating an application from that site? I mean, what, you know, why, how is it?
Not at this time, not for that site, not at this time. In my understanding, the D E C has already issued. Uh, spill numbers and different things for that property. We haven't done a hard look into that property. Um, but my understanding, it was raised during the discussion of fifty North Greeley and there is a D E C number associated with it. So that means they have eyes on it.
Did they close the spill number?
I do not know. We, we didn't.
So it's, it's, you know, obviously it's, it's another complication. Because we need those all the time. And another complication for, you know, the North Greeley area that needs to be considered.
How far is it from you?
Pardon?
How far is it from you?
I, I don't recall, but I know it's up the hill and I think it was, I don't know what the distance is, I wouldn't wanna speculate. But it was probably several hundred feet. If not a thousand, I don't know. I don't know how far out it would. But to Sabrina's point, there's, there's documentation.
The people looking.
There's documentation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, good. Anything else?
I'm not sure what Dick said about parking. What was his point there? What was that? It's okay.
I think, Dick, you mentioned that you were glad to see that there would be some sort of discussion on parking in North Greeley, yeah.
Yeah, he's happy about it.
Okay, okay.
Okay, great. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to close the, close the hearing, close the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Close the door.
Close the door.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, we did it.